Up the North Wyndham Sewer Project Award of thirty-eight million nine hundred thousand with two point, with two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollar debt forgiveness, with a thirty-year term at one point five percent from the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund as submitted by the Portland Water District.
So.
Second. Moving seconded, any public comment? Any council comment or staff comment, quick update on such a large number?
I do have a PowerPoint to go through because I think it would be informative.
I. Powerpoint, with a number like thirty-eight million, it probably requires a small PowerPoint.
Yeah, and I do want to, I do have Chris Kovell, who's the executive director of asset and planning management for the Portland Water District here, and Paul Rodrique, who was the senior project manager on our, for our North Wyndham Sewer, so they'll be able to answer a few questions too as we go through this. But I think we've talked about this at several meetings, but I thought it would be good just to kind of go through this. I'll go through this fairly quickly, but it's, I believe that this is going to be very advantageous for Wyndham in the long run. So, the first slide here is really then and now. It's kind of interesting, you go back to the nineteen fifties and you look at Wyndham and where you see all those big fields, that's all businesses right now. That's all been developed. And then the upper right-hand corner, that's just Booty's Corner, and businesses on either side all the way up, covering that whole green area. So the district that we established by ordinances in the dark line, we're going to break this into four phases, red, blue, green, and yellow. We're going to do basically the red and the blue in the first phase, just for the public to understand something. Based on the amount of water that, because all, the red and the blue, green areas are all supplied by public water, we know how much water is going into those areas. And we know that roughly, from the use of those businesses and activities, that there's about twenty-two thousand pounds of nitrogen being added to the aquifer every year in that area, and roughly three thousand pounds of phosphorus that's being added. We know from testing that happened from nineteen ninety-seven till, really, two thousand and ten, that there are a number of wells that are contaminated beyond the legal limit for drinking. Fortunately, there's public water to those, to those businesses and/or homes, so it's not an issue, but there's still groundwater contamination. That level is at thirty-seven milligrams per liter, which is exceptionally high. Law doesn't allow you to be higher than ten milligrams per liter. So there's definitely some contamination issues affecting that, that, those underground water levels. So what we're suggesting to do, and we've done the research on this, and this goes, remember Wyndham's looked at this for twenty years to figure out what is the solution. The best solution that we've been able to come up with, which is the, has the most cutting-edge technologies, we're going to take that, on the left-hand side, you see the map of North Wyndham, that's that magenta dotted line is the businesses we're going to include in the first round of Phase One and part of Phase Two. That's all going to run through that machine on the right-hand side, that's called a membrane bioreactor. That basically takes the wastewater, the effluent, whatever you flush down the toilet, sorts it out, processes it, and at the end, on the lower right-hand corner, you can see what's called the finished product, that's filtrate water. That's near potable water, okay? That's as clean as water as you're going to get. You know, this technology's been around for around thirty years, it took a major boost probably about ten or twelve years ago when Bill Gates got involved and decided to make a bunch of these MBR plants, and he put them around the world in third-world countries, totally changed the living conditions for those folks. Well, that technology has exploded here in the U.S., it's been pioneered and expanded on, and what we're putting here in Wyndham will be the, one of, probably the most advanced system in the state. And it'll clean the water to that potable level, not that we're going to drink it, but it will go back in the ground. Because the nineteen seventy-two Clean Water Act says you cannot put water into a river, lake, stream. It's just prohibited, period. Now, that's nineteen seventy technology. Here we are in two thousand and twenty-two, technology clearly makes it clean enough to do that, but we're not allowed to do it, so it has to go in the ground. And that's been part of our challenge here in Wyndham, we got great soils, but what you're looking at is a map that shows you from the side of Manchester Drive, which way that water flows. Now, we know everything left of Manchester, pretty obviously goes down to, down to Sebago Lake, but to the right side, we had to figure out which way it went. Some goes north, some goes over to Tarkin Pond, some goes over to some of the other ponds. The blue primarily goes down to Collins Pond, and the green goes to a corner of Collins Pond. And so we tried to target our solution to, that least impacted all the kettle ponds, and put it into a soil area that was the best receiver for this filtrate water. We're not putting in the brackish water, as you see there on the lower right-hand corner, we're not putting in the raw water. That's typical sometimes, which comes out of waste treatment plants, is that color, or it's in between that and the filtrate. We're putting it in the filtrate, the cleanest water possible. That's going to go in the ground, and it's going to go in that yellow highlighted area there, and I'm going to show you a little bit more about that. So that's Manchester School. What you see here is what they call a mounding effect of when you put the water in the ground, it can take well over to six gallons per square foot dispersed over a twenty-four-hour period, which is a tremendous amount of water. And remember, a year and a half ago, or two years ago, we approved here at town to put some fields in at Manchester School? Well, that turned out to be a great decision at the time, because as we got deeper into where we're at with the North Wyndham Sewer, we realized how great those soils are, we can put our whole drip dispersal system underneath those fields, and we're getting double the effect. We're getting the value of the fields, and we're getting the waste disposal of that filtrated water. So that's a huge win for the community, because we didn't have to go find someplace else, we're reusing it. And another added feature of this is we were able to partner with the RSU, which stepped to the plate to really help us. We have a second set of secondary disposal sites that we're in the process of researching, setting up right now. Those will come online in future years. So, when we're looking at that site, Manchester School, you can see these green lines that kind of have a slight curve to them, and you see numbers on there, one, two, three, and four. Those numbers represent how long it takes for that water to travel, one year, two year, three years, four years. So the water going in is a hundred percent clean, potable, by the time it gets to those houses, or anywhere those houses, it's clean water, and it's down quite deep, okay? Quite a few of those houses are on summer water by Portland Water District. There are some wells north of that that don't, I don't believe are going to be affected at all from what's your diagram you're looking at.
Barry, can I interrupt you one? We've had a couple of questions regarding that.
Sure.
Chris, answer a question for me, would you? Chris, the water that's coming out of this system, going into drip irrigation, going into the ground.
Yep.
Is it cleaner than the water you're getting out of Sebago Lake?
Well, we do serve drinking water, so we want to say, I don't want to ever put down that we serve the best water in the state, but.
But I'm saying, you still, you have to do something to it.
Yes, I mean, we, we have, we have to ozonate, we have to chlorinate and do those things. We don't have to filter the water out of Sebago Lake. This water will be just as clean as the water that's in Sebago Lake.
Thank you.
I mean, the technology is so great, and it's so advanced, that we don't filter the water in Sebago Lake. It's, it's that clean. We take it from eighty feet deep, and it's, and this is going to be filtering the water to that end.
I, I just want that point made, because a lot of people are saying we're polluting a pond. So, I, we're polluting a pond with water that's as clean as Sebago's. Thank you.
Could you go back real quick to the picture of the water? Your, your brackish water and your clean water?
Yes.
What are most systems, essentially septic systems in Wyndham, sitting up in North Wyndham right now, putting into the water? Or putting into the ground?
I'm going to say that brackish wash.
Okay. So you got some, as we talk about what we're putting in, I think it's also important that we talk about what we're eventually pulling out, which is the dark, dark water.
So that brackish water that you see is putting ten milligrams per liter in, of nitrogen and potassium in the ground. What we're putting in with the filtrate water is one hundred times cleaner. Point one.
Point one on the nitrogen.
Point one on the nitrogen.
On the phosphorus, excuse me.
Yep.
And then ten on the nitrogen.
Yeah. Point one on the nitrogen and ten on the.
Get it backwards.
On the phosphorus.
Backwards.
I got it backwards. I apologize.
Hundred times cleaner for removing phosphorus, which is what affects the surface waters and the brooks and streams the most.
Yep. Yeah. So, phosphorus for, for, is, if you want to, if you want to limit the algae growth, and you want to stop that kind of growth happening from, in the lakes and in the rivers, limit the phosphorus that goes in. That's real important. And this does a great job of cleaning the phosphorus. And the nitrogen just simply is not good for, above that ten milligrams per liter, it's not safe to drink. And so it needs to be cleaned out, and, and, one of the things, I want to go back, I want to go down one more slide here, because when you look at everything east of Manchester Drive, right, there's about, well over a hundred, a hundred septic systems that we would be taking out, that would no longer be used. So all those septic systems, which are pushing out that brackish water, okay, are going to go through this new machine above, it's going to come out as filtrate, so we're taking a hundred of those systems offline. Well, those hundred systems are putting stuff in the ground, which is flowing in all kinds of different directions that you can see. So in essence, we're taking a big area and we're cleaning it up, all right? It's going to take time, years, but it is a smart way to clean up that whole area, and to eliminate the total tonnage of phosphorus and nitrogen that's going into the ground. When you do the math, this is really interesting, you take that whole area, a hundred systems, a hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons, do, and we did this on the phone, we had Chris Kovell, Paul Rodrique, Greg Wood from DEP, one of their senior analysts, we had our engineers, we did the math, how much of, how much phosphorus and nitrates are coming out of the current Manchester School and going into the ground, all right? And it was like five hundred pounds. When you take the hundred and sixty thousand gallons, you do the math, math doesn't lie, you know, so you do the math, you're putting in half that amount for a hundred systems. That's how, that's how accurate and efficient this system is. The beauty of this is, when you look at this system here, you see that, that's a modular setup. So, if we were to put that in the ground and try to make something like South Portland had, we'd be putting forty, fifty million dollars into the ground. But here, we can do one of these machines for probably two million, and we can modularize it and have two or three of them. And they got, they got built-in redundancy in each machine. So even if a portion of that machine goes down, the other half of it can still maintain that same capacity load. So you got built-in multiple redundancies to make sure that the system doesn't fail. And that's been really researched through our engineers and through Portland Water District, which has been a great, great partner for the community to be with. We're not experts in wastewater and water, but Portland Water District is. We're great doing the planning, the fire, the police, and those services which we've been involved with for many years. They, Portland Water Districts are the, are the experts, and bringing them on to help us with this project has been absolutely fabulous, to get a solution. So, as I mentioned, we're removing a hundred, one hundred septic systems, twenty-two thousand pounds of nitrogen, three thousand pounds of phosphorus, and it's opening up a whole new way for the community to grow in a controlled growth area through our ordinances in the areas where we want growth. And we can, and with that growth, we're preventing additional nitrogen and phosphorus from getting into the ground. It's a double win. This kind of shows you that area, it shows you where the collection area is, where we're going to have a pump station, where the disposal site is, and where we're going to have future locations down on Drive-In Lane, and a few areas down in there will have some additional Vidos wells for the, that filtrate water to go into. So, we're taking the dense area, we're running it through that machine, it's going over to the far right where all those fields are, okay? And that's going to be done through that drip irrigation with the filtrate water. We have through, with Portland Water District, they've set up, and we've done tours to plants that are using this technology. We've seen, we've actually physically gone to plants, and we've done virtual visits to a number of plants. Part of that was because of the COVID, we couldn't go there, but we were able to do it virtually, which was really very helpful. This is a little bit tighter show of where those fields are and how that fits within the Manchester School. This gray, these gray boxes show the different zones of where the water, the filtrate water will be deposited into. This shows you what those, that drip dispersal irrigation looks like. And what you're seeing, it's basically about a three-quarter inch plastic pipe with very specific pressurized tags on it, which only lets so much water out under pressure. So you can't overload any one section of the system. It's very, very balanced. Two sites that the Water District found with our consulting engineers on where this drip disposal's been done, one is out on Martha's Vineyard, you can see it's under the major part of that park there, it's right up against the ocean. Never, their community's not had any, any issues with how, how the system runs. The next slide shows you, this actually went into a school area, it's up against that body of water below is the Sudbury Water Reserve, that's the drinking water for the community. You can see the, the green box off to the, kind of the right-hand side there, that's where the drip dispersal is. And they use, that recycled water, they also recycle it back through to use it for their toilets and other irrigation locations, because it's so clean. So they're really recycling that water as they use it. So one of the things that Portland Water District has been really, and they have so many different sites that they manage, and being good neighbors, that building that's going to house that machine is going to look something like maybe this red barn here. It's not going to even look like a wastewater treatment plant, it's going to look like a barn. Portland Water District has found that, you know, being able to fit the right operating equipment into the right neighborhoods in an aesthetically good way is a great way to build confidence and to have good neighbors, to be a good neighbor.
Barry, I have a, just a quick question. So when we talk about the dispersal site where this filtrate is being deposited, how far below the surface is that dispersal area with those pipes that you referred to?
They're down six to twenty-four inches in the ground.
And then the field, the playing fields are above that?
That is correct. There's at least six inches to twenty-four inches above that of soil before the playing fields. There'll be no water from this system used for irrigation on those fields.
Okay.
Don't need to.
Thank you.
So let's just talk a little bit about the numbers, and this is why Portland Water District's here, I mean, the, the Portland Water District applied to the State Revolving Loan Fund, which is really the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. It's run by DEP, and it's money that's been set aside to improve wastewater systems throughout the state. Paul Rodrique was the primary lead on the grant and putting it together, did a fabulous job. We had our engineers who came back and told us this project was roughly about forty million dollars to do. Paul took that information, took our demographics for what we have in South Wyndham and here in Wyndham, and was able to present that data, so it went before the DEP committee. And we ended up in, there were seventy-seven applicants, we were the second applicant to receive the most points, okay? And out of the hundred million dollars they have available for funding, we received thirty-eight million nine hundred thousand. That's really very, very remarkable. I mean, that's one of the highest awards they've done. And number two, which is really, really struck me, is we were second. I mean, I know of wastewater treatment plants that will be underwater in fifteen to twenty years based on climate change, and they ain't much of anything. DP sees something, whether we want to acknowledge it or not, DP is looking at us and saying, you have a problem. It's like that movie, remember Apollo Thirteen? Tom Hanks is there and say, hey, Houston, we got a problem. Well, here we are in Wyndham and saying, hey, we got a problem, folks. We got nitrogen wells that, that are way over where they should be. We know we got way too much phosphorus going in the ground. We have an issue, and we got to fix it. We don't, we kick this can down the road, we're going to pay dearly for it, I believe. I just think the timing, the things have aligned correctly, we got the right partners, we can do this. We got the award for, for the forty million, we got two million two hundred and twenty-five thousand in debt forgiveness, that's the maximum amount of money you can get. I had other sewer district directors that I know around the state who, I saw them at a meeting recently, and they came up to me and they said, how the heck did you guys do that? You got the maximum award and the maximum debt forgiveness, I'm surprised. That really tells us something about what the issue you have.
We've never gotten it. The district has, we have four plants that we operate, six communities, and we've gotten some minor grants, I mean, fifty thousand or twenty thousand, but not anything like this.
This is, this is a really good deal for Wyndham to, the voters should really, very seriously consider this, because this is, I think this is a one-time opportunity for us to jump through.
One point five percent.
So, so forty million, right? A lot of money, how do we pay for that? That's the, you know, we got the award, we got to pay for it. So part of that, we know from our tax increment financing, with the monies that come in, we can leverage fifteen million. So let's subtract fifteen from forty, right? Now we're down to twenty-five million, right? We know that with business expansion in two key areas, and Tom Bartel, our Economic Development Director, has been in contact with two developers, they've actually come to the town, they've met with Bob, they've met with me, they've met with Tom, they've met with Amanda, they're talking about real projects. And those real projects are going to bring in sixty to eighty million dollars in new valuation. Well, that new valuation, remember that, we talked about that silo? We, that additional value that gets built in the TIFF, it goes into the silo funds? Well, that, that means around six hundred thousand dollars in new revenues coming in. Well, the six hundred thousand dollars leveraged against one and a half percent, you can't get money any cheaper than that in today's market, there's no, it's just unheard of, one and a half percent for thirty years. That six hundred thousand dollars will generate us easily ten million, probably closer to fifteen, to be honest with you, all said and done. So now we're at twenty-five, now we're down to less than, right around fifteen. We have town ARPA funds, those are federal funds we receive for the community, we can use those for wastewater. We did use a little bit of that money to compensate some of our fire, EMS, police, and town employees for their service work during the pandemic. There was a modest amount of money given, given to each, each person, but the ninety-three percent of that money we saved, and that's what that one point seven million represents. We have applied to Cumberland County for a grant of one point two million, we've applied to the mains congressional and senatorial delegations to use their congressional direct spending monies they get, we're looking to get six million dollars in grants, okay? So when you add all those numbers together, all right, and you put that against what we owe, we basically are going to be able to pay for this system using our TIFF district funds. So, the one thing we may have to do is on that business expansion funding of ten million, we may have to do a bridge loan. In other words, the town would borrow that money and would be paid back when those businesses are built and the valuation comes in, we can offset those, those numbers. That may be for three or four years, but we may not need to do that at all, depending on the timing of how this goes in. So we're in a great position, we're in a great position to be able to deliver this, this new project to the community. Our timeline, we're now looking to get this to a June vote, it actually will happen on June fourteenth. I always got to listen. So June fourteenth, going to a town meeting vote, we're going to ask the voters to, to support this project. We have a special article that's for the referendum that the voters will vote on. I explained this at the last meeting, there are three ways to do this. One, the council can make the decision, you have that authority, right? You have the authority to enter into an agreement with Portland Water District for ten, twenty, thirty-eight million dollars, you could enter into that agreement. But, so the council has discussed this, the council said it really wanted to bring in more public participation and to vote on this. So that option one was set aside. Second option was to send this to town meeting, which is held on a Saturday morning, and again, the council looked at it and said, that's a great option for us, but we want broader support across the town. So that option was set aside. Third option was to do a ballot vote, referendum vote on June fourteenth, same time as the election is for the primaries. So that will be before the voters who want to come in and vote, you'll be able to get an absentee vote by the end of the second week in May, I believe. And so you can vote that way, or you can come into the polls and vote. And that's how, so we're trying to get as broad a support from the public. I mean, if this is not a good idea, then vote it down. If you think it's a good idea, preserving the environment, protecting the aquifer and the water quality, then this is a good thing to vote for, because we, we think we've got it funded in such a way that there's minimal impact to the taxpayers here in Wyndham. So, our next steps are really to go into an agreement on a CMR, which is a construction manager at risk, and Paul Rodrique, the senior project manager for Portland Water District, has been involved with these for a number of different projects, and you can, he's here tonight, you can ask some questions about it. But basically, this is, we would go, my understanding is, we'd go through an interview process, and Portland Water District has already reached out to some entities, I believe. We would line up that construction management group to take the current application that's been done, and the budgeted numbers for this project that have been developed by the engineers, and refine those to the scope for here in Wyndham to get an exact number, and use that exact number to then build the project going forward based on those numbers. And we believe that those numbers are going to be at the forty million or less, because those, we know those numbers were elevated to a certain extent to accommodate market conditions and changes. So.
We're getting the thirty-eight.
So you voted on this, when you vote, you're voting to accept the application that Portland Water District did on our behalf, for the thirty-eight million dollar bond, that one and a half percent for thirty years, and you're accepting the two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt forgiveness. And then this will be confirmed, we will notify the state, the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund that the council has supported this, and we'll also notify them that this is going to go to a vote on, a confirming vote on June fourteenth of this year. And that would be acceptable to them, is my understanding in talking with both Paul and Chris.
And we need to accept these funds, because if we don't, we could lose them.
We lose the thirty-eight.
We lose them, we.
We're in a queue right now, so we want to make sure we say, we want to reserve our, these funds for this project.
So we're reserving, we're basically taking out a line of credit, we're not spending thirty-eight point nine million dollars with this vote, we're, we're giving us access to it if approved and to move these things forward. Yeah. Do you have something to say?
I do. My apologies to the council, because I keep talking about this same point when this comes up, but Portland Water District is here, so could I ask you a question? If you'd come up to the microphone, and my fellow councils have probably heard this, to me, this, this is going to a vote, this is a, really a no-option vote to me, I guess that's kind of weird to say when you're voting, you do have an option, but my fear is that the public continues to look at a price tag here, which is understandable, the town is going to foot some of this bill. But I'd really like you to look at the financing options the town manager has laid out, because I don't know where you find this type of a deal anywhere, and if we don't do this now, how much of the public works building costs is extra by the time we did build it? Four million? It's going to continue to increase. To me, this isn't even about businesses, this is the safety of the lake. So am I right in saying that when we're checking the test wells up in North Wyndham, that the nitrates and the phosphorus levels continue to increase? Is that accurate?
It is accurate, that it is only going to get worse as.
It's going to get worse.
People keep putting stuff in the ground.
So if we as a town vote. So, if we as a town vote this down again, eventually, we're going to poison the lake?
Well, I mean, obviously, Sebago Lake is huge, and 30% of that area is going into, into Sebago Lake. We, we have concerns, but at this point in time, it's probably going to take years for that to occur, but you have smaller ponds and kettle ponds and, and streams that are going to get hit hard if this continues.
Before the big lake.
Before the big lake.
When the big lake gets hit, what happens? Do we just keep going with letting the nitrates and phosphorus pour in there and hope it doesn't, let, what would the consequence be if we don't start pulling some of this out of the ground, and it starts poisoning our smaller lakes and potentially our large lake?
I mean, it, it's, you know, way out there in time, so it's hard for me to, to, to say what's going to happen, but it will definitely have a huge effect on the smaller lakes. Sebago has got a trillion gallons of water, so it's not as, as, you know, from a, from that standpoint, but we, we're excited that you guys are even considering this, because this is, this is one of the areas around Sebago Lake that we have to, that the district has to be concerned about, because it's unmitigated. You, you, it's going to continue. There's nothing to stopping septic systems from continuing to dump water into the ground that can't be treated.
So, if we start poisoning and ruining our smaller bodies, is there no consequence to the town? Will DEP, will the state step in and go, "You know what?"
I think DEPs recognize that by the fact that they ranked it the way they did, uh, as far as, um, and so I don't know. I really can't say. I mean, obviously, you have a gun to your head. If DEP stepped in and, and gave you a consent order, you have to clean, then it's an easy vote, right? You don't have a choice. But they haven't done that, and you guys are getting out ahead of it right now, and I think that's probably the better step to take than wait for a...
Agreed.
Wait for a consent order with a gun to your head, and then the cost doesn't matter to DEP, or it doesn't matter to the state or to the regulators, because they're just saying, "You have to fix it."
So, when we wreck it and DEP brings the gun, we're going to be forced to fix it at X amount of dollars, whatever it turns out to be.
Whatever it takes.
We have no option.
No.
Which will be a much more expensive route than what we're doing.
Yeah. We, we always take that approach at the district, is that we'd rather be out ahead of it.
For sure.
And, and try our own path, as opposed to waiting for consent orders and regulators. A lot of towns like to have consent orders and regulators, because then they can tell their voters and everybody, "Well, we have no choice." But that doesn't work. It only costs a lot more.
And that's what I'm hoping the public can hear from this presentation, which they've already heard from the town, but I'd like them to hear that from you as well, that we really need to move this forward, or else the consequences, if you're worried about the financial implications, it's going to be tenfold down the road with no option, and that could be very detrimental to a lot of people here. So, please ask your counselors or your staff members, if you don't understand how we're chasing this financing and the monies to get this done. You just heard the gentleman from Portland Water District. We do have consequences if we don't do anything going forward. Um, so, take it seriously. And in the past, I know what happened with the vote. This is a different situation altogether with the way we are financing it, with the treatment. You see a lot of people saying, "We're all forced to pay for it," um, and that's what they don't like, even if they're not going to connect to it. That's the most popular comment I think I see from the public. And, uh, whether you can connect to it or not, if you're living in South Wyndham, you'd be forced to pay even more so if we ever had this crisis. Go to the DEP. So, that's the thought process that I think we need to look at this project from, as far as how much it costs. So, thank you so much for your input. I appreciate it.
Chris, stay there for one second.
Sure.
How much of North Wyndham is on Portland Water?
Uh, good, Portland, North Wyndham is on Portland Water.
What are the houses and everything up there are?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because the bigger issue would be if you had to put water in the ground to everybody, because I'm sure a lot of them aren't testing their wells to begin with, but if...
Yeah, but most, a lot of North Wyndham is on, on public water.
Thank you.
And that's probably why it's been taking so long to, to address it, because people are on public water, and their, their concern isn't there yet, uh, but it, it is there.
All right. Thank you. Barry, the other thing that, um...
Chris, if you could just hold on a second.
You're not allowed to leave, Chris. Just, just...
You're a friendly group.
It's been 30 years we're trying to, 30 more minutes.
One quick thing, Mark. The 44.4 million, when you look at that, and you look at your list, list of forgiveness on, on grants from other places, again, we're looking at 11.95 mil. So, we are doing a homework, even with this. That 38 could look a lot different with what's coming in, in grants.
Yeah. The, the grant side of this is well over 25%. That's significant.
It's, I just wanted to make that point, that we're even looking at that with this big picture.
So, Chris, I just want to summarize to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
So, we've heard from the Department of Environmental Protection, and they've told us that we have a significant problem, so much so that we are elevated basically to the highest level. And so, consequently, um, we have this loan that's being provided to us to fix the problem. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. Yeah.
Okay. So, would you say that we may not be in crisis at the moment, but we are approaching it? Is that fair?
That's fair to say, yeah. I mean, definitely approaching it.
Okay. So, we've been identified as a, as a significant problem with the DEP, so much so that we are being given this low, extremely low interest loan to address it. We're approaching a crisis scenario here. We have an opportunity, it really sounds like we're at a crossroads where we have a gift that, that we're looking at right now, and if we do not take advantage, we could lose out significantly at a much higher cost in the future. Is that fair?
I would say that's fair. Yes.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure I understood that this is, we're, it's a very critical situation. We have an opportunity to clean our water, make significant improvements for the greater good of the town. Good. Thank you very much.
And, and we're making, I got nothing for you, Chris. You can leave. No. No, and to your point, Councilor Kalidrakis, and I think is all of us, anyone who supports this, and counselors, and as we speak to people, um, you know, when folks talk about, A, what they're going to have to pay, we really need to show them what they're not paying. I mean, the best, now, I keep thinking about if my, if my septic system in my backyard's failing and it's leaching out into basically a cesspool, and I'm staring at it, and I mean, clearly I want to do something, but in our homes, we got to pay 100%. This is like an opportunity to get 50, 60, 70, 80, maybe a percent more paid for something we need, and will not only help our environment, but also create opportunities. And for those folks in any part of Wyndham, but if you're in South Wyndham and you think, "What does North Wyndham have to do with me?", you've just got to look at how your tax dollars flow. It's quite simple. All of our tax money goes into the same pot, and without any infrastructure to help support new business or commercial, then we'll all just continue to grow as a bedroom community to Portland. We will grow residential, we'll grow our schools, and with nothing to offset it, we will pay more in the long run. So, the, the, the thought that this is costing us more than it's worth is absolutely completely backwards, because this is really an investment to help alleviate our costs and to help not leave the next generation of Wyndham with the same problems. So, we, we've got, we've got no option at this point, and, and the last thing I'll just wrap it up with is, I don't think personally in, in my lifetime, I don't see how we would ever get a fin, better financial package put together with what we have, just the way the world has worked out, with the extra money, the grants, the, the funds from the state, the work that's been done. I have a feeling also, if I were these entities handing out money, and Wyndham were to miss this opportunity, the next time we show up on their door, I'm probably going to remember every time that Wyndham has said no. So, it's, it's time to say yes, and this is the plan to do it. Dave?
When you say, "Cost people money," in essence, all this is really costing people, maybe, is a small bridge loan for four years. And then, as Bill points out, that money is there and still going. It might be. There's other ways of doing it. But if that money's there and still going, the fourth year that we're not hurdling that loan, that money can then be used to keep that budget extremely low. So, it's not as if we're not looking out for the future with this too.
Anyone else? I think we all have been educated on this as much as we can. Now, we got to go and...
We have. It's the public.
Talk to our residents.
Thank you, Chris.
We've got, we've got one in the audience. Okay. How many at home? Must be thousands. All those, are we going to take a vote? Um, all those in favor? 22073. Unanimous. Counsel Correspondents, anybody have anything on that? Seeing none, Town Managers report.
Just three quick items. Um, tomorrow night at the Manchester School, there will be a public, um, informational meeting on the application that's being submitted to DEP for the drip disposal system, the North Wyndham wastewater treatment, uh, location. Uh, that'll be at 6:30 at the Manchester School. Um, I've got, Chris Koval will be there, Paul Rodrigue, Scott Firma, who is the director of all the wastewater, uh, facilities at Portland Water District, our assistant town manager, Bob Burns, Tom Bartel, Economic Development Executive Director, Mark Arente, our engineer, uh, myself, uh, and then we're going to have two representatives from, uh, our engineering consulting firm, Ty Bond, Dan Bissin, and Kyle Coolidge. Um, and if the, any of the select, uh, if the council members are free, we'd love to have a couple representatives there. Uh, the presentation will be by Chris and myself. Um, there'll be a question and answer period. We have sent notices out per the DEP to all the abutters, to the Manchester School, and we sent out, uh, we went above and beyond, uh, to make sure people were informed. We sent out notices to everyone, um, abutting Collins Pond, and everybody, uh, in, in those different road associations to make sure everybody was informed. So, um, I think the town's done a really nice job of trying to keep this very transparent and informed for the residents. Um, we expect that meeting to probably be a good hour and a half or so, maybe two hours, but we're going to, slightly different presentation than you saw tonight. It's going to be a little bit more technical in some respects, uh, but I, I think that it, it'll be very informative. So, it, that's the first, I just wanted to let the council members know. If you're free, we'd love to have you there.